First.
Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, first can I get a motion to go into executive enclosed session to seek confidential advice to counsel and to discuss medical, financial, credit, or employment history of particular town employees?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. McCarroll.
Yes.
Ms. Woodhouse.
Yes. Downstairs. Back quick, promise.
After ten years.
Ten.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
They're the best.
The best.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so first up we have the approval of salaries of officers and employees for fiscal year 2025. You can see all of the entire salary schedule here for all of the employees and the appointed paid board positions here. Whereas under the budget system, it's mandatory that the town board of the town of Cornwall must fix salaries of the town officers and employees of the town either elected or appointed and determine when the same shall be paid. Town law section 27 subdivision 1 resolved that the town board shall fix the salaries of the following town officers and employees for fiscal year 2025, beginning January 1st, 2025, at the amount respectively stated, and that such salaries shall be payable at the time and period respectively specified. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Next up we have mileage reimbursement. All employees will be reimbursed at the IRS 2025 standard mileage rate of 70 cents per mile for use of their personal vehicle for town-related expenses, or, sorry, business. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Authorization for supervisor to invest monies and to submit and publish annual report. Whereas the supervisor is charged with the duties of chief fiscal officer of the town of Cornwall, we do hereby authorize that office to invest in interest-bearing certificates of deposit and/or treasury bond savings accounts in accordance with the town's written investment policy and as provided under state law. Be it hereby resolved that the town supervisor be authorized to invest town monies in order to secure the best return for the town, and that monies may be deposited, invested in any bank or trust company incorporated in the state of New York or under applicable federal statutes. Authorization for supervisor to submit annual report and publish same within 60 days in the official newspaper. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Town board meeting dates. Be it hereby resolved that the Cornwall town board during year 2025 will hold monthly work sessions on the second Tuesday of every month at 7:00 PM. Regular monthly meetings will be held on the third Tuesday of every month at 7:00 PM unless otherwise noted on the attached schedule. You do see a few. We did make a change in February to accommodate the Association of Towns meeting, the conference that's going to the 25th. And then in April, we moved it from the week of spring break when, you know, to the 22nd. And then we're only having one meeting in July and August. Obviously, if there's like a need to have special meetings during those months, we will, but you can see the schedule. And then there's some stuff in November, which we have time if we have to change things based on, you know, budget needs, you know, the budget process needs or other things. If I could get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Ms. McCarthy?
Ms. Scott? Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
I know.
Oh, sorry, yeah, it was my bad, I'll go back. Yeah, we gotta get that. This is the resolution designating the official depository. Whereas under section 64 of town law, it's provided that the town board of the town of Cornwall shall designate by written resolution the banks or trust companies in which certain town officers shall deposit the monies coming into their hands by virtue of their offices. Now therefore be resolved that the Webster Bank and Orange County Trust Newburgh Branch are hereby designated as depositories in which the supervisor, town clerk, receiver of taxes, and court clerk shall deposit all monies coming into their hand by virtue of their offices. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Um, yes. Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. The official newspaper, be it hereby resolved that the, well, it's actually the Cornwall Local or the Hudson Valley Times Media Group, which is the new ownership, yeah, shall be named as the official newspaper for the town of Cornwall in purposes of conducting all official town business effective January 1st, 2025. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Resolution appointing the town attorney. Be it hereby resolved that the firm Drake Loeb be appointed attorney for the town of Cornwall effective January 1st, 2025. I just.
Can I get a second?
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Resolution appointing, resolution appointing, yeah. Resolution appointing town engineer. Be it hereby resolved that the firm M H Engineering be appointed engineer for the town of Cornwall effective January 1st, 2025. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yep.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Okay. Resolution appointing planning consultant. Be it hereby resolved that the firm Langantelli be appointed planning consultant for the town of Cornwall effective January 1st, 2025. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yep.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Next up I have a resolution to appoint employment labor council for the town of Cornwall. Be it hereby resolved that the firm Jackson Lewis be appointed employment and labor council for the town of Cornwall effective January 1st, 2025. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Okay. Can I get a motion? Which one is this? Okay. This is a resolution appointing tax and real property council. Can I get a motion? Be it hereby resolved that the firm Ira S. Levy, attorney-at-law, be appointed tax and real property counsel for certiori proceedings for the town of Cornwall effective January 1st, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Next I have a resolution appointing special counsel for tax on real property. Be it hereby resolved that Hacker Murphy, LLP, be appointed, or Pat Sealy be appointed tax and real property special counsel for the town of Cornwall effective January 1st, 2025.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we're tabling this next item until next week. Next up I have a resolution appointing bond counsel Hawkins, Dellafield, and Wood, LLP. Can I get a, be appointed for, effective January 1st, 2025. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Yes. Next up I have a resolution appointing the accountant at the firm of Nugent Hostler P.C. Be appointed accountant for the town of Cornwall effective January 1st, 2025.
This is to clarify that they would do the audit for the town board. I know that word accountant when they discussed was.
Yeah, they're our accounting firm.
Right. It's just a different.
Yeah, it's to do the audit, yes.
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Yes. Next up we have the marriage officer. Be it hereby resolved that Jen McCormick, town clerk, be appointed marriage officer for the town of Cornwall effective January 1st, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Next up I have the authorization to pay dues to the New York State Association of Towns. Be it hereby resolved that the town of Cornwall has the authorization to pay dues to the Association of Towns of the state of New York in the amount of $1,500 for the year 2025. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Next up I have a resolution putting in place a procurement policy. Be it hereby resolved that the town board of the town of Cornwall adopt the current procurement policy, which is attached. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. At next week's meeting, we're gonna finish out the appointments, so I don't have those tonight, so, but we'll have those for next week. The appointments that the town board makes, so we've got the, I'm just gonna read the list, and then we've got the deputy receiver of, let's see, here. We have the deputy receiver of taxes, Regina Hines. We have the tree warden Angelo Shambari. We have the Mudna Creek Watershed Councilperson, Bruber. We'll get someone to fill that vacant, I don't have that tonight. We've got the emergency management director Kurt Han. So if I could get a motion to approve those, should I do all those or just read through the whole list?
Oh, you should read through the whole list.
Okay. So we have the conservation advisory council. As you can see, we have two vacancies here. You can see the members that are on here. They're all seeking reappointment, the ones whose terms are expiring. We've got Carol Gold.
We need to know names, Josh. We can if you can.
No, I don't.
Just to go through.
Sure. I'll go through the names. Carol Gold, Carla Castillo, Aaron Sellaquini, Kate Krimsky, Katie Stone Wallace, Nicole Augustine, and Edward Warren. The Economic Development Advisory Committee. We have three vacancies on there, but we've got Jason Burnham, Mary Heed, Steve Jones, Lucinda Poindexter, Thomas Leabald, and Dean Gilemis. None of those terms are expiring this year. We've got the sandring board of trustees, you know, all of, we have one vacancy. We have Elsa Cameron, Joanna Doyle, Mary Beth Green, Mary C. Davis, Sarah Vasidis, Scott Stewart, Colette Fulton, and Colleen Zlock.
Mr. Supervisor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you, in order to serve on these committees, are you required to be a Cornwall resident? Because Colleen Zlock is no longer.
I believe that she never, actually, I was just gonna point out.
Yeah, so she never.
She is, I believe she sent her resignation letter away.
I just wanted to.
Okay, so.
She did, so just cross out, because there's another one in another.
No problem.
Okay, all right. We've got the senior advisory committee Kathy Ferraro, Alice Hall, Elizabeth Jergens, Elizabeth Longenot, Mary Misery, Hector Torres. They're all seeking reappointment. We have the main street revitalization committee, those are annual reappointments, Elsa Cameron, Marge Crouppa, Michelle Powell.
Can we cross off Marge Crouppa?
Yeah.
Because she had said she didn't want to.
Okay. Take her off. Michelle Powell, Carrie Miller, Katie L. Pell, Maureen Buckley, Ivy Hartman, Elizabeth Help, they're all seeking the annual reappointment to that committee. Then we have the zoning board of appeals. We have Richard Randazzo, Eileen Regan, Cheryl Lee, Jackie Keegan, Lenora Ransom. Their terms are all, well, Eileen Regan is seeking reappointment. Hers was up this year. We've got planning board, Amy Richmond.
She's been on.
Yep, she did. Yep.
Josh?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Elsa Carmen, I'm a little confused about her position. Is she part of the sandring or part of the Cornwall revitalization committee?
She actually represents like the sandring park, like she actually works as a lead designer with the sandring trustees in terms of safeguarding that particular property.
Okay, so does she have to be at the meeting every time? Not really.
And it's open to the public. She's open to the public, so she's able to.
I mean, no, I'm just saying that for her sake.
Well, she, I think she said she wanted to be involved.
Yeah, I know, I've been looking at her letters, so it says part of the Cornwall revitalization committee.
Well, I guess she was under the umbrella of that because she worked primarily on sandring park, so.
Okay. Fair enough.
We have the planning board, so Amy Richmond, Stephen Drabich, Led Kloski, he's seeking reappointment. We have a letter from him, Joseph Grave, Neil Lavesky, John Hines, and Mary Beth Green. Then we have the board of ethics, we have Thomas Gushwin. We do have one vacancy. Anna Kraft, Roland Thomas, Justin Kimpel. We've been, so what we're doing is, we've been reaching out to him now for about a month. We've not heard back, so if I don't get in touch with him by, say, February, then we're just gonna, I mean, what should we do with that? We haven't been able to get ahold of him to see if he wants to continue.
That's a pretty good indication, and I'm interested.
Yeah, but that's sometime, I know, but sometimes, like, we've done that in the past, and then all of a sudden people will say, oh, no, I didn't, I.
Well, is he up for reappointment or?
I think it's true.
Yes.
Yes. So that's.
Well, then I wouldn't reappoint him until you hear from him.
Okay.
Just leave it at vacant or start looking for someone else. You need somebody else anyway.
Yeah, we do.
To take.
All right, so we'll, so we'll leave that, so I'll add that as a vacancy. Okay. So then it's just really just Thomas Gushwin, Anna Kraft, and Justin Kimpel. We've got, we'll just consider that we have two vacancies.
Two vacancies.
Yep, on that. Then we have the board of assessment and review. We got James Klein, Sally Hildebrand, she's seeking, you know, she was September 30th, 2024. She was just held over, but she's, she put in a letter, so she would like to be reappointed. Don Patterson, Lauren Solner, Darrell Rogers. And then we have the hazard mitigation planning committee, Thomas Gushwin, Joe Gepper, Sean Arnott, Gary Vincent, Pat Hines, Michael Big, Walter Moran, and Kurt Han. You know.
That's a good group of men. Really.
Just make sure I got it, sorry. That's, all right, so if I can get a motion to, to accept all of those appointments and reappointments.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Yes. Then we have a list of town holidays. You see the attached list here. As you know, we've added, I'm not sure what's in there. Where is, oh my god, where is Juneteenth? That's supposed to be, that's supposed to be in here. Okay, you know what, this is for, but Juneteenth is one of our holidays. That's for the, that's for the CSCA. Yeah, it's for the, yeah. Gotcha, my bad. Okay, sorry. Yeah, okay, so the, yeah, but that's because we're still negotiating the PBA contract, and I believe that is one of the holidays they want in there, so, okay. So, so this is the, you see the paid holidays for the full-time police officers, and then you see a slightly, you see the other calendar for the full-time employees excluding police officers, which has Juneteenth on it. And then we have the highway and sanitation schedule 2025, which shows the date that were, that were closed. If I could get a motion to approve the list of town holidays?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yep.
Ms. Scott?
Ms. Mike Carrotti?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. So you said we could kind of just go into this, and then when the folks for the public hearing, then when it gets to seven o'clock.
I believe the way it was scheduled was that the reorganization meeting would commence early, and then the regular meeting would commence immediately thereafter.
Okay.
If you've scheduled the public hearing at seven, you have to wait until seven to hear.
Yeah, this will probably take.
Do we?
Did I miss anything?
No, no, no. We went too fast, the deans were so.
So, cut. All right, is there any public comment? Well, certainly when, if anyone from the public shows up, we'll certainly, we'll just, yeah, we'll let them comment when we get to a, to a place for that. Okay, so we're gonna wait on the public hearings till 7:00 PM. So first up, we have the Association of Towns, the annual meeting and the training per diem. That's the annual meeting that we have every year. That's in New York City. That's, I think, starting on February 6th, Sunday, February 16th. I know that I've, the board members have, you know, pretty much submitted stuff to Megan, you know, as to, they should be all registered, and I believe Megan's started making hotel reservations for those that are gonna be staying over. So we have that list. Let's see, the UNISTAT advisor agreement, this, you know, we do this every year, it's just a, you know, a contract for a municipal financial advisory service that we use. We have that. Yeah, number.
What number are we?
We're on three now.
Three.
Yep. So we have, number three is the amendment to the local law exemption for volunteer emergency service schedule of public hearing. So we're gonna do that later in the special meeting, but I don't know if.
You want to do it, are you doing it in February?
Yeah, well, well, we have to, because we have to get this done. Do you want to say something about that, Steve?
Well, March 1st is taxable status day.
So we have that before that.
Yeah, it's got, the law has to be in place. If you hold it in February, we can get it, if the board is inclined to adopt it, you can get it adopted at that meeting, and get it up to the Secretary of State, and it'll take effect.
Good question.
So Steve.
February 11th, right?
Yeah, we'll do September 11th when we get something.
So Steve, I mean, I was hoping that some public would be here, but obviously they're not here for this, but the lady coming here, but since it's being taped, and those people are probably reviewing it on TV, or when they're going online to review our meeting, can you explain what the current law out of Albany states, and why is there a mix-up between the village fire department, which is surrounded by the town, and it's not included in our exemption within the town, the Ken, the Kenburn Fire District has, if you live, if you have a resident, a house that's in the town of Cornwall, you know, so here you have, I know one particular person that lives in the village that's surrounded by the town, pays town taxes, and is a Kenburn firefighter, and he did not receive anything. So can you explain whether Albany, or whoever made up that municipal law, I think it's 466A?
Not to be small. No, no, that's it.
But whether Albany go wrong, and why do we have to make the correction?
Well, the law as originally drafted envisioned a situation in which a firefighter or EMS worker would be entitled to this tax exemption for property located in a particular municipality, and for firefighters or EMS workers who provided service to that municipality. Now although a town and a village are technically, well, one subsumed with the other, the village is part of the town, they're nevertheless separate taxing entities. So the way that the law was drafted was if you live in the town and you provide EMS or firefighter service to the town, then you would be entitled to the exemption. If you live in the village and you provide firefighter EMS services in the village, you would be entitled to the exemption. It did not contemplate that there would be people who lived in the village and provided firefighter service to the town, you see, because now, because they're separate taxing entities, the property wasn't in the town.
Yeah.
And so those people, even though the village enacted the exemption, and they did get the exemption from village taxes, did not get it from town taxes. This was a problem that has been around for, since the law was enacted, and I believe it was in December that the governor signed the revision to the law, 466A, which allows for exemptions to be provided to firefighters who provide service to other municipalities. And that covers this situation.
Okay, so I have a part B, and part B is this, is that the town has no fire department. The Kenburn Fire District serves fire protection for the town. Cornwall Hudson, you know, is a, is a, well, it's a corporation, and they have a village fire department. South Bay Village Fire District, one third of that, almost one third of that, resides within the town of Cornwall, and they serve protection for the town of Cornwall. Village Gate has another large section of their fire district, which also serves protection in the fire district, i.e. Forest Cliff and those areas off of 32. So would that, do we still have to make a change? Because, you know, for like Village Gate firefighters that live in that design houses in the town of Cornwall, yet they.
If they live in the town of Cornwall and they. If they live in the town of Cornwall and they-
Like, I'm, I'm a South Bay Village firefighter. I live in Beaver Dam, I live in the town of Cornwall, but South Bay was Fire District. Even though I'm not, I was, but if I was, would, you know, my, my chief submitted the paperwork, you know, to, to the assessment and stuff, and when I would not get the reduction in the town taxes.
If you live in the town of Cornwall, even if it's in an incorporated part, like a village, and you provide service to the town of Cornwall, it doesn't have to be exclusive, it just has to be to the town of Cornwall through the fire department, you get the tax exemption from town taxes.
Under new law, the revised law.
Under the new law.
Right, the new revised law, not, not the old one.
The existing law, you do not, if you are in a different taxing entity.
Right, so, so nevertheless, no, certain people in South Bay Village that live in the town of Cornwall, Village Gate that live in the town of Cornwall, Cornwall Hudson, that, that's surrounded by the town of Cornwall and pay Cornwall taxes, because of the old law, they, they don't, the law was not meant correctly to, to recognize that.
That's because of the way state law was drafted, yes.
I'm, I'm saying this loud and clear, because I want, for people who view this, I want to make sure that they can hear and understand it.
Well, put it very simply, if you are firefighter or an EMS worker who lives in the town of Cornwall or in the village of Cornwall on Hudson, and you provide firefighter EMS service to the town of Cornwall, you will get the exemption from the town.
Uh, not good, not for fun.
So, it, so now that the tactics have come out, will this be revised for this year? Or do they have to wait till next year?
Next year.
Next year.
Okay, and that's, that's really, I, my apologies, I didn't do it, but that's just, you know, it's wrong.
You couldn't have done it before.
Sure, sure, should have thought about the law a little bit more before.
You, you could not have done it.
I mean, we, we did-
No, not us, I'm just saying this thing, like, thinking these scenarios.
We, we did everything that we were-
No, I know we did everything right.
It was nine, it was, it was a high, above us.
I mean, look-
That's why the state changed the law.
Well, that's a good thing now, but-
Yeah, I mean, look, certainly when this was being pushed to though, but I mean, look, I'm sure that the, the advocacy groups that were pushing this and were, and, and were looking at this, and I'm sure there was like other, like, fire associations and other folks.
Of course.
A lot of people that were pushing this, they missed this too, or they didn't, like, it just didn't get worked out. So-
Well, yeah, I mean, the issue was if you're in the village and the village enacted the exemption, you were getting the tax exemption from the village, but of course, there are town taxes get charged to village properties.
Again, Steve, I, I'm, you know, I'm not upset, I'm just, you know, being kind of like vocal about it, because I want you to be vocal about it, so that people can pick up on the cameras, people can watch and understand their hair. And, you know, so, so we get this cleared up, you know, because I've given a number of phone calls. You know, been in the fire system for forty-plus years, I know just a couple firefighters.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure a lot of people are annoyed by this. I mean, it is, it's a, it's a very unfortunate oversight.
How much it affected?
It's a very unfortunate oversight and, you know, we're trying to move as quickly as we can to, you know, rectify this. I mean, I wish there was a way that we could give it to them this year, but, I mean, really, right? There's absolutely no way that we can-
They only enacted the law in December, that was pass, taxable status.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the timeline on it.
So, all right, so we're gonna-
Thanks, Steve.
So we have, um, we're gonna do this next week, but we do have a recommendation from Ira Levy, our, you know, tax statutory counsel, that we, um, you should have had a copy of the memo that would have been sent with this as well, but the recommendation is to basically provide an assessment reduction of one hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and fifty. And this is for the property owner of CVS sixty-five Quaker. So, that'll be on for next week.
I'm sorry, I guess that's, you know, item number four?
Yes, yep, four. Sorry, yep, number four. The next thing, we have the, uh, this is, you know, the JFS friendly visitor program. This is the annual MOA that we sign for that program, so we can continue that service.
Was that, was that last bit of, was that resolved?
No, we are still waiting. The bank has up to ninety days to provide us with a response, and it's not been ninety days yet.
And it's not been resolved?
No.
No, it's, it's not been resolved, but this is, they've already started, I believe, what, continuing to do services in January?
Yes, they've, they've started services, right, even without this base. So, I just want to let you know, our investment is basically doubled.
What's that?
We're not voting on number five? So as far as the financial-
We'll do, we'll-
During the special meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that next, we'll do that next week. I mean, look, the board wants to go into-
I thought JFC we're doing tonight, Joe.
Do I have that on there? Oh, do I do, yeah, well, I mean, I mean, look, they've already started. And unless there's a reason for, um, we're not gonna be double billed.
Right, a double billed.
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna be double billed for that. Um, we will continue at the rate of ten thousand dollars. And, you know, obviously, once we get a resolution to, you know, the, you know, the incident, we'll, you know, we'll make any decisions that we have to make.
And again, again, that ten thousand dollar investment actually translated to over twenty thousand dollars in services to the community. So it's, it is a worthwhile investment, and hopefully can resolve the other issue.
Yeah. Then we have the, we're gonna do this next week too. This is the resolution denying the village of COH's request for real property tax exemption. That'll be on for approving that next week. I believe the school district was voting, you know, whatever their, uh, their first meeting in January, they were gonna be voting to do this as well. They were waiting till January to, to do that as well. And we've got, the next up, we have personnel appointments to highway. That's number seven. So as you know, Billy Goldsmith, he's retiring on January 16th. Um, you know, our longtime work, you know, work leader in the highway department. I mean, you know, you know, honestly, um, I don't know how we're gonna, you know, I'm sure Tommy's like, uh- Yeah, I mean, I think, we have a really, you know, we have a really good replacement, but obviously, losing somebody like Billy is gonna be, uh, you know, it's gonna be a loss for the department. But we do have somebody, um, you know, Jim Collins, um, you know, Tommy believes that he can, you know, sort of step into the, into that role.
He's sat up to the plate for the past few weeks already, so.
Yeah. So I think, I think we're gonna be just fine.
Have you ever seen my, my email I sent out to the, to the board?
I did, but, um-
After the meeting.
Yeah.
Which one?
I don't know.
I want it to send tonight.
No, I know, I opened up.
I'll get your phone.
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me get your phone. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna do this in regular session. We're gonna appoint, um, Jim Collins to that position. As long as the board agrees on that. Um, then we have also part of this two. We have a side letter, um, which would be an increase of two dollars an hour greater than the current twenty twi, uh, the current twenty twenty-five working leader position. So we would be adding two dollars an hour to the, to the current salary and the current CSEA contract. So, but we-
What is the current salary for Allen?
Don't have it in front of me. Do you know what, here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I- It's in the contract. We adopted that, um, when we, you know, voted to approve that, but yeah, it's an additional amount and, you know.
Well, since it was just two dollars, that's why I asked you.
Received.
All right, so we got that side letter. We're gonna do this next week, but I know we've all spoken about this. So basically, the new rate for, um, New Windsor EMS is gonna be thirty-eight thousand dollars a month or four hundred and fifty a year. Steve's just, you know, taken time to, you know, to review the final signed contract that we had that goes back to, what was it, twenty twenty-two? Just to make sure that when we approve the, you know, pay rate, that there's nothing that's gonna go awry. As you know, we're just doing this, but we still have to negotiate, you know, the rest of the contract and, you know, how long it's gonna be.
I don't expect, I'm sorry, Josh, let me catch up. I don't expect to be any substantive change in the terms. I just wanna make sure that the language applies going forward and that the fee schedule meshes with the terms of the existing contract. So I'll just give it a once-over and, um, it should be ready for next week, no problem.
All right, then we have vehicle and traffic law changes, commercial vehicle parking regs. I know that, I believe, Tim and, you know, Virginia, this, this is the whole commercial parking over on, you know, Grand Street, maybe some of the other streets, um, you know, we had to, the board had to decide, well, one, if we're gonna do anything, and then, two, if we are, how many streets? How extensive is it gonna be? Because, you know, I guess, and, you know, I mean, really, and you guys were gonna go and kind of like, you know, come back and, you know?
Did.
Yeah, okay, so-
I did talk to, I did talk to Tower Properties, which is based in New Jersey. That manages one of Avenue Apartments, Old Fort Hill Apartments, and, um, and Windsor Tennis, you know, over there in Village Gate. Those are the three apartments that they do in, in Orange County. And, uh, and I spoke to an lady that's kind of, supposedly is one of the managers there. And her mind and her eyesight are very nicely, you know, professionally. Don't care that people park commercial vehicles out of town, out of town streets. Because what happens, if I, I, the way I started, I said, if I manage an apartment, one bedroom or two bedroom, how many parking areas am I allowed? One. But I could be eligible for two, if I applied for a second one, but that's it. So what's happening, and they, and they know this, that people, because gas prices are so high the last few years, that people were going, weren't able to take their wood vehicles home and use them back and forth. But they wouldn't allow the parking in their parking lot, because they're allowed commercial vehicles in the parking lot. The issue is that when I went to the parking lot, probably about a dozen or more times, at all different times of days and night, there has been commercial vehicles parked in that parking lot. I said this to her, and she said, no, there hasn't. I said, yes, as I'm not seeing things. And, uh, there's quite a few of commercial vehicles parked there, but there's also commercial vehicles parked in front of people's houses, starting from Friday evening to like Sunday, you know, Monday morning. And they stay there, they don't move. And some of these areas, it takes a road that, if I'm correct, never more, twenty-five feet wide, you know? So, but, because they can't, they park too far on their lawn, they park kind of on the curb of it, might have to go out. And some of these areas actually squeeze the, the, the traffic down to almost one lane, you know, causing, you know, potential, you know, traffic houses and stuff. But this has been going on for a couple of years now, and, uh, it needs to be addressed. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of people, not just one or two people comparing about it.
So did you come up with any?
A very large neighborhood is comparing about it.
Did you come up with any solution?
Yes.
And where is that?
Well, they get parked there for only a limited amount of time. And I thought we discussed the last, I think it was last month, we discussed it.
Because some of the, um, I know it happens on Grand Street, because I live on Bridge.
Right, I know, yeah.
So, some people just, that's their commute vehicle.
No, that's not the vehicle.
I mean, I'm not talking about, about any particular person, unlike saying that could be, not all of them. All cases not the same, but maybe somebody just have that particular one car to commute.
It's, it's not a car, it's, it's a commercial vehicle, it's a same commercial vehicle. Now, now they're new, because they got newer vehicles, the fleet changed, and now they're newer vehicles, but they're still, you know, work vans, work trucks, so on and so.
I totally understand and empathize with, um, the residents, because I am one of them. However, I also think that, um, with Main Street being soon busier than before, all those side streets, which is Grand and Broadway, and what else is there? The, not Villa, all those, people gonna come park there and go shopping or do whatever they have to do, so you can't, we can't just be-
Well, we're talking about commercial, all right?
Commercial vehicles.
Commercial, commercial plated vehicles.
Not like, so say, you have, we live on that street, and because she goes, oh, so if I live on that street, and I have a party, I have a bunch of guests over, I'm not talking about that. I'm not talking about someone's parked there, and, and laws, and like graduation party, or whatever, time of party, or something like that. I'm talking about commercial vehicles, same one, same weekends, every weekend for a long period of time of part of a specific area.
Back in October, November, we said we were gonna do, um, no overnight parking on X, Y, and Z streets.
That's what-
Maybe signs would-
So I, so I had asked Tim and Virginia, whoever, to go out and like identify which, you know, which streets we wanna put it on, you know, and so I think, and then, yeah.
Yeah, and we're not, we're not telling people they can't park there for, but it's just, can, well, because, and, and, and efficacy goes a long way, you know, instead of parking the, the commercial vehicle, because you don't want to use your own personal vehicle, go to work, just trying to save on gas. I got it, I understand that, and stuff, but the problem is, is that, you know,
There's a lot of-
You got a whole neighborhood screaming at us.
And there are commercial vehicles, like you said, that are parked there. Um, there, there are in that particular complex.
Yeah.
Uh, as, um, older, long-term residents are moving out, there are contractors that are doing work there. So, that, that neighborhood or that complex is definitely in flux right now.
There are some contractors doing work there, but, but there's also, 'cause a couple of times I saw vehicles parked there, and they're not doing what they're-
I think signs would be a good idea, that would-
But we still have to, would amend the traffic.
We just gotta pick out the streets.
Yeah, because we have to amend the traffic law.
You gotta tell them what streets you want, though, and from where to where.
And then the timeframe, right? What I'm saying, it's no overnight parking? Because we can't totally ban, I mean, right? Because then you'd have issues if they were doing work there during the day, anytime somebody-
Well, yeah, I mean, as far as I go, that's, that's true, deliveries, things like that.
Yeah. So I think what we need is, we need the streets, and then we need some proposed-
I, I agree, like, the side streets, like Grand and, and Broadway. I now see vehicles that are parking actually inside the, the culverts, like, and the new sidewalks that we just installed. I mean, it's, it's really, um, you know, it's, it's-
Because what's happened-
All right, we'll give you a list next week.
Because she was telling me that, that commercial vehicles park from there to where, too, and that's a complex.
But where do they tow?
Yeah, it's gotta be the, what, the GPS coordinates or the, the, the boundaries of the-
Building inspector, yes, I'd like to hear.
Have you considered putting a minimum or maximum size on that commercial vehicle?
That's a good idea.
Because you can get a pickup truck with a commercial vehicle, and I don't think that's what your intent is. I think you're more like box trucks.
No, I think it is.
Oh, is it? The pickup truck?
It's, it's small box trucks, now there's a, now there's actually like a, a larger van, like, you- You ever see, uh, the Amperas one seven seven, Amperas in Tulsa? It's like that size.
Kind of that sprint.
I think, would you just say "commercial vehicle," you're gonna make it difficult for the police officer, because I could have a pickup truck that says "commercial vehicle."
I have commercial presence on that truck.
I believe one of them is a pickup truck, actually, it's like a pest control pickup.
Yes, just lots for you.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a pest control truck with boxes on it.
Or size?
And I guess, but it's can, like-
So if somebody gets a take, uh, just, I guess, playing, let's say somebody works for the, you know, Hallebeck or whatever, or whatever company, and they have a take-home vehicle, they don't have their own personal vehicle, and they live on Grandview, or they live on Broadway, or whatever, then what happens? Like, to me, that would seem like that would be putting out somebody-
Yeah, I mean, it's-
So that, how do we, how do we deal with that?
It's what you're telling.
Yeah, but they have driveways.
That is the case, actually.
Well-
No, but they have driveways.
Yeah, but, so, but what-
When I'm talking about, these people don't-
Yes, but what if they have a full driveway, and then they have to park in the street? I guess, is that just like a case-by-case, if like the cop pulls up, and they'll be like, well, look, I live here, my driveway's full, but like, my, my son works for this company, he's living at home, and my husband, you know, and the husband, I'm just trying to like, I guess, like, how do we-
Story to judge.
I've only seen like one, I've, I've only seen like this week with one vehicle so far that's been parked there. I do see a reduction in the number of those vehicles.
Yeah.
I do, I, I, I've seen a drastic, I've seen maybe one, one of those vehicles. So maybe the discussion with the apartment management has, has some impact, draw some attention. Like I said, I've only seen one in the past, the same car.
It's two, it's a van and a truck.
Yeah, it's two.
It used, it used to be like three, three trucks, big, big trucks.
We're not talking tractor-trucks.
No.
No, 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 no.
We're talking a small, small, dirty pickup truck.
Like, like a type, like a type two ambulance, you know, size.
I know what a Sprinter is, because my son, I don't know what a-
One's in a lawn company, one's a pesticide guy, and one's saying, I should think of electric truck.
The other part of the complaint was from the bridge, like actual bridge, Main Street.
Right, yeah.
There was a vehicle that was parked there-
That's correct. Right.
Days and hours and all that, so, and that, that pickup truck was big. That was twice as big as the other ones on Grand, so.
You mean on Bridge Street, like up towards the planters? Is that what you're talking?
Toward the bridge, yes, the first portion of the bridge.
I, I know the paths of these, of these vehicles are parked, I'll give, most people's drivers, so.
Where the, where the parking park is, right, right out.
Community easy, I would recommend no overnight commercial, the same time limits are parked, like 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Make it easy on the officers, and just pick your streets and slap your signs up. But I mean, are you helping the people that are complaining, though? Because if a car's there all day till 9:00 PM, is that a help? I mean-
It's, it's a start, you know?
I mean, I don't, I don't know that we can ban, because then what if people are having work done on their house? So they're having-
You can't ban it, because, yeah.
No, but the hours should take care of it, as far as I go, it's no overnight parking.
I think it's more like May time, if they're, like, definitely.
There has to be another municipality that's, and they drafted this before, so. Oh, sure.
Have you had this anywhere else?
I, no, I looked it up, I called the Association of Towns when this first came up, to find out what the, uh, what the rule was in regard to it, and they said, if you have a residential neighborhood, and it should be purely residential, you can ban commercial vehicles from parking on the streets. Now, as Josh Rayly points out, you probably don't want to try to do a complete ban, because if you do, when, you know, the, the plumber's truck rolls up, you can't park on the street. Maybe you can park in your driveway, maybe he can't, I mean, you know, depends on a lot of things. But that's not the problem you're trying to address, it's not to get rid of them completely, it's to prevent them from parking for long periods of time.
Using the street as like a long-term parking lot over the weekend, that's what we're trying to like, for that.
If you either do it overnight, or if you limit it to four-hour parking, or whatever you wanna, you wanna do, that should take care of it. Now, in terms of commercial vehicles, the cleanest thing is to ban all commercial vehicles, and yes, you're gonna hit pickup trucks if you do that. But you don't have to do that. You can define commercial vehicles however you want. Gary points out, you could do it by Whitlam, which is absolutely fine. If you wanna exempt out certain commercial vehicles, you can. You make the police officer's job much harder in determining whether it's a violation or not, but, you know, sometimes it's one of those, we're gunning for these clearly commercial vehicles, and we're not gonna fight about whether it's a double-axle pickup or not, and-
Well, that's, that's, I think that's the complaint, is, is that these are clear advertising, you know, billboard type, you know, commercial-
So it's like such-and-such plumbing, or such-and-such, like, pest control, or such-and-such, like?
They're not large vehicles at all, though.
They're not, they're not sign vehicles, but they're-
Okay, so it sounds like we're gonna get the streets. I think we go with what Tommy said about this, and we give it to Steve, and he drafts, uh, an amendment to the, you know, the VNT law.
We got a petition from, like, sixteen-
No, no, I, I agree, we definitely need to, you know, do this.
Can't just ignore it, you know, that, that's not-
No, no.
No, no, we, we shouldn't ignore it. I, I think what we've discussed is kind of a reasonable compromise. And look, if it doesn't work and it continues, then we'll have to go back and, we can always amend the VNT law further to make changes to this.
Yeah.
All right, so next up, we have the resolution, Sandring Homestead change order number one. So we do have, we have one change order that, um, we had to, when we had Sandring Homestead opened up, it's opened up, we've gotta put insulation in there to make sure that it like better protects the building, and so this change order would basically pay for the cost of that insulation. It's only fifteen hundred dollars, so it is a slight amendment to the contract, bringing the new total to a hundred and forty-four thousand.
That's number two.
Yeah, that's, oh, right, looking at the, no, it's number one.
Number one is it?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it was two.
So that's fifteen hundred dollars, bringing the total value to a hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Then we have another change order, uh, this is number two. There is no cost for the change orders, but I think technically, we still have to amend it, because they're doing additional work, so this is a no-cost change order, the best kind. I might add, um-
I think that's because that's for, that's not my good for the government, it's just something-
Yeah, yeah.
He's worked with the highway department, telling me about, you know, the French name of that.
Yeah, so it's-
Are we voting on this?
Yeah, we are in the, yep, well, we will in the special meeting. Then we have the Bridge New York Culvert Agreement. This is from, uh, this is from the DOT. Then we have the Bridge New York Culvert Agreement, um, this is from, uh, this is from the D O T., we have to do this, um. You know, this, uh, we got the Bridge New York Grant, and D O T. requires us to pass this lengthy, you know, I was gonna rate, uh. Waive the reading of the resolution when I get here, but it's not really gonna matter much, because there's like fifteen different resolved on it. But, uh, yes, we have to do this in order for us to continue processing the, you know, the Bridge New York, you know, grant. That we got for the Jackson Avenue Culvert Replacement Project. That's that, um. That was a one, I think roughly one or one point one million dollar grant we got from the D O T. to pay for that. Get to the justice court. Lengthy D O T. contract. Alright, then we have the annual, um, Justice Court Audit for F Y twenty-four, we do that every year. Item fifteen, we have the annual, uh, G F O. A. Conference, that's the one that Pam goes to, our, our controller. Um, that would be authorizing her to attend that. Then we have a, I know people have been asking us about this for a while, um, this is the Boulevard Culvert Replacement Project. This is the one that was damaged during the July ninth flood, we have finally been able to get to the point where we can put this out to bid. So we wanna get this out to bid, and.
This morning, ironically, we were awarded a one point.
Yeah.
A million for FEMA also.
Yep.
Still gotta wait four months for the money.
Yeah, one point two.
Hey, you know what, I mean, it took us, if you go back and look at Hurricane Ida, I mean, jeez, it took us how long to get paid for that? Money is money, um.
But we didn't get to Long Hill Road.
Well, there's still some, some work there, um. Then we have Near Map Software, this is the assessor's software program that she uses, um. This is just the annual renewal that we've been doing every year. Then we have a resolution for the Office for the Aging, a lease agreement for the County Dining Program, this is an annual lease agreement that we approve every year. And we have the twenty twenty-five towing applications for express towing. We have a training request for the Building Department Training School, Gary wishes to continue his training. Need Gary to stay up on the latest and the greatest. Um, alright, is there any public, I'm just, we're still a little short here, okay.
Might as well knock the special meeting out.
Yeah, we'll come back to the, hey, I'm, that's fine, is there any, is there any public comments? I know, um, no, okay. Yeah, we might as well knock that special out, huh? Alright, so first up, we have the, uh, the resolution to amend the local law exemption for volunteer emergency personnel. And schedule a public hearing. So, alright, whereas the town board of the town of Cornwall has a local law before it entitled. Local law amending the town of Cornwall Town Code Article Four, entitled exemption for volunteer emergency personnel. Of chapter one thirty-two, entitled taxation to add a provision to section one thirty-two dash six A. To extend the real property tax exemption set forth therein to enrolled members of an incorporated volunteer fire company. Fire department or incorporated volunteer ambulance service residing in the village of Cornwall and Hudson. Whereas in order to take action on the said local law, it is necessary to schedule a public hearing and make specific referrals. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the, that the movement of this resolution does hereby introduce the above-proposed local law. To a public hearing on the proposed local law is set for February eleventh, twenty twenty-five at seven o'clock P M. And that do notice that the same is directed to be given by publication and posting, can I get a motion to approve?
Question.
Yes.
Question, I'm asking, uh, so, is this only circumferenced to issue with the borough of Cornwall and Hudson firefighters? And, uh, and are actually still covering those who reside in town of Cornwall? But, or, but, uh, but serve for other five districts, as I even said before, Salisbury Mills, Vale's Gate, as well as Cornwall and Hudson.
If Salisbury Mills and Vale's Gate do not serve the town of Cornwall, then the people who serve in it will not get exemptions from the town of Cornwall.
Well, they did, that's why I'm saying those, those.
Then they, then they're.
There's, there's, they got, they got section of the districts, uh, actually, or in the town of Cornwall.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, Tim, the resolution, the resolution, the, uh, amendment to the state law. Um, provides that not only can you, uh, afford an exemption to people who reside. In other taxing entities who provide service to the town, it also provides that if you want to. Give the tax exemption to firefighters who reside in your town, but, and EMS workers. But serve someone other than your town, so if you were lived in the town of Cornwall, but you were a member of a fire department. Or an EMS company that served Highland, or Blooming Grove, or, you know, New Windsor, but didn't serve. That their, their district didn't serve the town of Cornwall, you could still give the tax exemption to those people.
Okay, is that the exemption?
But we are, we did not include that in this local law, and this local law, it's only for firefighters, EMS. Where, if they live in the village, who serve the town of Cornwall.
Uh, not, not people of the Salisbury Mills or, or Vale's Gate.
If Salisbury Mills and Vale Gate Fire District serve the town of Cornwall, and I believe they do, then they get the exemption.
Okay. Not that it's a lot of people.
Are we, I, so I guess the question is, are we sure though that the people that you're referring to live in the town of Cornwall and are? Cause I know there's certain areas where you're, where you're talking about that are like, if you're on this side of the road, you're in Cornwall, if you're on that side of the road, you're in New Windsor, if you're on this.
And I guess that's what obviously, you know, identified.
Yeah.
Then the, of course, they have to be the owner of the house, the residents, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, and they, and that, and that, and that residents have to be within the town of Cornwall, and then that district, they're, they're firefighters for that. Vale's Gate Fire District, or South and North Fire District, I E. Beaver Dam, all of those qualified, those are two of the news. Uh, uh, you know, then it, and if the, if they're both in town of Cornwall.
Yeah.
Then, you know, they should get the exemption, you know, uh, if the chief smits it, you know, and, and they, they meet the requirements, which is a minimum of three years up to twenty years, and.
Yeah.
All that stuff, that, that force and the requirements, well, I mean, it's not, it's not, I, I thought it's gonna get, it's just.
Yeah.
And it's, I think it's, I mean, I, I know that the Salisbury Mills list, I think it's really like one person, you know, and I think Vale's Gate, like, two or three.
Okay.
Cornwall, I think it's like five.
Okay.
It's not, I mean, it's not like a lot of people.
No, 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 I, I, I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, doing what we have to do here, okay?
Yeah, that, what I'm trying to say, is, is what I'm trying to say first, I'm gonna make sure that we're not gonna pass something that's only specifically to help out. Just Cornwall and Hudson, I mean, I wanna help them out, but we should cover all the, uh, the, um. The fire districts that are, and that serve the town of Cornwall.
If the service area of a fire district is within the town of Cornwall, and the person lives in the town of Cornwall, they should be getting the exemption now.
If we get it now.
They should get it now.
So I guess the question is, is there a possibility that? So this all goes up to the county, this all goes to the county's like system, and, and if we, if we got the list from. Yeah, so if we got the list, and they were on the list, and the assessor's office has it upstairs, and that got submitted to the, to the county, then if they really truly live in the town of Cornwall. And they serve a fire district, that they should be getting it now, as you're, as you're correct, right?
Yes.
So you're saying that we've got.
But not the village of Cornwall and Hudson.
Yeah, there would be.
I understand, okay, so this is changed to get those of Cornwall in it. Okay, good, let's try and get it clear, so, cause I, um, people are asking questions.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of confusion.
I'm not, I'm not, no, I, I'm, when I get done talking to people, I'm like, wait, wait till a while, I'll talk to us. I'm not a liar, so fine. Anyway, thank you, Steve, appreciate it.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Same.
Second.
Miss Mike Rosi? Yes.
Yes. Alright, number two, this is the resolution for J F S. in Cornwall, uh, this is the Family Visitor Program, the M O A. Whereas the town of Cornwall has received a memorandum of agreement between Jewish Family Service J F S. and the Town of Cornwall Senior Independence Program, CIP. To outline the responsibilities of each organization, and whereas the town wishes to enter into the agreement with J F S., now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town, uh, that the town board does hereby agree to enter into the above agreement, a copy of which is annexed here too, and made part of the resolution. And authorizes the supervisor to execute the same, can I get a motion to approve?
Same. Yes.
Yes. Alright, so next up, we have the two, um, this is going, we can't do this yet, because.
We gotta wait till a public hearing.
We gotta wait, so.
Skip over it.
We'll skip over these two here. Oh, we're having, running efficient meetings here, and we're getting.
Maybe we should just change this at five thirty from now.
Well, no, we want to make sure we have maximum participation. Alright, so we'll come back to that, cause we have to open and close the public eye. We're, we're gonna go to the, um, uh, to the appointment, we're gonna go to the, alright, can I get a motion to promote James or Jim Collins? To the position of working leader?
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Miss Mike Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes, alright, then I have the C S E. A. Side Letter, can I get a motion to approve the side letter for Mr. Collins? Um, adding an additional two hours greater than the twenty twenty-five work leader rate.
Yeah, after discussing with the highway superintendent, I'll make the motion.
So, so, yeah, second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Miss Mike Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes, and then next I have a renewal for Near Map Software, the twenty twenty-five renewal, can I get a motion to. Authorize the supervisor to accept the quote for the Near Map twenty-five hundred dollars for twenty twenty-five?
Is this for the assessor?
Yes, this is for Near Map, yep. This is a tool that she's been using since she's gotten here, I get a motion to approve.
Same.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy? Miss Mike Rosi?
Yes.
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution for the Office for the Aging Lease Agreement for the County Dining Program. Whereas the County of Orange, on behalf of the Orange County Office for the Aging, has presented the twenty twenty-five lease agreement for the senior dining program. Between the county and the town, and whereas it is in the best interest of the town to enter into the agreement with the county. Now therefore be resolved as follows, one, that the town board hereby agrees to enter into the annexed agreement between the County of Orange. And the town for the twenty twenty-five senior dining program, two, that the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute the agreement. And forward the same to the County of Orange, can I get a motion to approve?
Same.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Miss Mike Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Next up, I have the twenty twenty-five towing applications, this is for express towing. Um, can I get a motion to allow the express towing to participate in the twenty twenty-five town of Cornwall towing list?
See, this is not the, the towing company, you know, having issues with somebody else.
No, pass.
Okay. So you make a name?
Yeah, they, we, they, they've been out for years, they were just late in submitting.
Okay, thank you, I'm submerged.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Miss Mike Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Alright, next up, we have the training request for the Building Department Training School, can I get a motion to approve the training for the Building Department Training School?
Same.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Miss Mike Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, I wanna make sure you're up to date, Karen. Alright, can I get a motion to approve warrant number one?
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Miss Mike Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes, alright, so we're just gonna have to, to wait on this now for a little bit, until seven, um. Jason is on his way. Let's see, is there anything else that we can go over here as we're.
Josh, just add a question.
Yeah.
The meeting time cannot be early, like six thirty, half an hour early.
I mean, we all, I mean, we could revisit it, but, I mean, I think it, it would be tough for some people to make. Yeah, of course.
Like things in the way Cornwall, like things in the way Cornwall. Like you start a new tradition, but.
Don't you think five thirty, even six thirty, better than seven?
To a four o'clock meeting.
Six thirty just.
Too cold. And that's, I mean, you might have to hold off until I.
So who's going to A to? I'll be down, Mr. Curtis, go down. Bring in, uh, Sarah Wilson?
Will, uh, is Ivan going? Yeah, we should, yeah, I'm, I'm going, going down Sunday. And staying Monday, Tuesday, going back Wednesday, I would like, take full advantage this year, since we're moving to a meeting.
Delegate to the, uh, Cultural Association of Towns.
You know what, did we, did we have to vote, did we have to vote to do that? Um, so we gotta do that next week then, okay. I thought we normally make that year, right?
Not this year, I gotta be in, uh, uh, Warwick, uh, Tuesday night.
Oh, okay, nice, we gotta just make a note of that, point delegates.
Thanks, Happy New Year. Yeah, they, um, they moved their Monday meeting to Tuesday for Martin Luther King, so I'm gonna have Dom come and sit with you guys.
Okay.
They moved your meeting from that, so I don't have that recovery.
No, I'm sorry. I can't wait for this.
It's like a dog with a bone.
There's the Dr. Ben U. G. P. M. There's several other reports that don't have that. Here, there's L G. P. M. So you got a hydrant valve on the copy after fix, or replace it? So you got better than what you have, but there's still missing the impound, and you have, uh. Deficiency on one of the hydrants on the, so over this, and that's the most important part. The key can direct on opening a hydrant, it won't work. Initials, what I can tell you, I think, can I write this letter right?
Well, we should probably really try and sit down, we should probably try and sit down, talk about that. I think, I don't think any, as long as Central Hudson doesn't care about the bushes, I don't think. We do, but it's like, the guy in charge today, he knows he's gonna be there.
You have to have a way. You have to have it waiting. Yes.
I don't know, I would say that's not a.
But, it's almost like this thing's gotta just do.
Yeah, and the, um, uh, our, uh, tree, um, tree was, what was his name? He said, the species that he picked is one of those hardy ones, that if you, if you cut it, like trim it, it will come back.
Right.
And it won't go too tall.
Just like a bush.
Yeah.
I don't agree with that. I mean, this hydrant's working now. I don't have a, a report from a diet diet professional, so I, I, I can't agree with long-term things. But again, you only give it to me at the meeting to share with me, you know, you should do this in my books. So I could be candid with you. You're looking at girl, just reading me a damn last, you read up there? Again, you're doing the best you can, again, I'll trade you there.
I can't read anything on this, it's all so small.
On the survey.
Yeah, I think what's probably gonna make sense is, once we get the engineer report, to see if we can have the engineer actually come into a meeting, um, but we don't have that, I think.
Some of the hydrant reports are missing some data. And one of them identified a cap on a hydrant that needs to be repaired. It might be difficult for the VFT to open the hydrant. It's the one where it says no. The top of the valve to turn a hydrant on, it's a B five sided, and it's almost rabbit, which means it's.
Oh, it is, okay, good, alright. Alright, cool, we can, um, uh, continue with the NEMA, you know, unsafe building proceeding and fire, uh, and, uh, fire hydrant proceeding, so, um, Jason, um, I know you gave us, um, we have the fire hydrant test report form.
Yes.
We have an update, I know from talking to you, you had said that the engineer, I think, has in draft, um, form the the report that he did on this and I guess his evaluation, but we don't have a final one yet, um.
They say they were gonna send it to, uh, the report tomorrow. Tomorrow, before tomorrow afternoon, they're gonna have to complete the reports comes over. So I just carried their suggestions and opinion from their report, some like, uh, key points, you need to share with all the board members.
Okay. So I get, so, I mean, obviously Gary, you, you know, you just got this, um, I know there was a, there was an earlier email that he, that Jason sent to us as well, and Tim got that too, that came, I don't know, around what, like two or three o'clock? That we got, that I guess you were trying to get the information out prior, so, um, certainly we need the report. Um, we're gonna have to have our engineer review it too, you know, because we involve the MHE, and Sean Arnott in this. And then, it's probably gonna make sense to, I, I would think to what, to possibly have their engineer come in and explain his findings on this?
Obviously Sean and the engineer have to speak.
Yeah.
I think that would be the first step, but, uh, beyond that, I think the engineer really needs to get before this board and explain exactly what he's talking about, I mean, there's things here like, install additional water storage tanks near NEMA. It's the first I've ever heard any mention of that, I can't imagine what they're talking about. Um, and the long-term plan, I, I think I kinda get where you're coming from, but it's the type of thing that the town board's gonna need some assurance that there's fire safety, adequate fire safety, while you pursue whether it's replacement of lines or you know, I don't know, you pump station to increase the pressure or whatever it's gonna be, but, I mean, it's gotta be safe for the students to go back now in order for the town to have any level of confidence to allow a long-term plan. You, you following me?
Yes, yes. Uh, I just want to quick explain, so there's the map, like, from the engineer, so, uh, he requests to cast eight hydrates plus the one cross street. But that one, like, uh, when we talked to the, uh, to request, to apply for testing, we get rejected. But from the engineer's opinion, because that one is really close to the school building, so.
Who rejected you?
I don't get the, the information, I just know, like, when the, uh, when the contractors, uh, notice the department to test it, but they get rejected by, by testing, say, we don't have the authority to open the.
So, so they, they reached out to the village water department to get the authority to, 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 I guess they wanted to have their private, this company here that does, uh, capable fire protection to test the village's hydrant, right? And the village said no, which I, I would presume that they would probably say no, so the question is if we're trying to get a, a test on that, because the engineer wants to see if there's sufficient pressure coming from the road, is that a number that we can get from the village water department?
Pressure, but GPM.
Yeah, so it's whatever we have to get, yeah.
Yeah, and also the other thing is, uh, on the map, there's a hydrant number seven, uh, close to the street, so that one is not managed by the school. It's managed by, uh, probably the water department or some other department.
Is that in school property or across the street?
Across the street, so that one is managed, not by the school, by the department. So that one, we tested, uh, the GPM is on, is less than below six hundred, so it's a five ninety-one. So that one, uh, tell us, like, even though every hydrate's in the campus, maximum is a five ninety-one, they won't go higher than that, because that's the water, uh, GPM comes into the school. So that's, that's the, uh, what I shared, the opinion of engineers in the, in the report. So he thinks the, the general, uh, flow comes in is below this required standard. So which means that shows the school won't have the enough pressure to supply the school for the, uh, fire safety. And we also suggest them, like, if we can install the sprinkler for each of the building.
Is this, I'm sorry, is this your engineer or the town engineer?
Uh, our engineer.
Okay, what is his name?
Uh, Daniel.
Okay, the, the copy you have given us is, you, from what I understood is, your understanding from his report?
Yes. So tomorrow, the, oh, we're gonna share the report from.
The engineer didn't have the fully, he only had a draft mode, a copy of the report, so tomorrow they're gonna have a final version of the report.
Yeah.
Um, but even if, you know, we have it, obviously it's gonna take time to review, to have Gary look at it, to have the engineer talk with Sean about it. So, I mean, it really, it's gonna do no good until we have our engineer look at it and come back to us with.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
When we get this report tomorrow, is this map gonna be included?
Yes, yes.
Can we get a version of it that's actually readable, because this is not?
Um, probably can share the PDF file, the PDF files, you can.
No, we're requesting a paper copy that we can read. Not a PDF that I have to sit at my computer and try and read, I want a large paper copy that is legible. Thank you, Whit.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would just ask, I would just ask that, you know, have your engineer provide, Building Department and my office, I mean, we don't need to have like six massive, well, I don't know, I mean, how big are they? So I mean, yeah, you know what, I mean, you might as well.
We're all, we're asking you.
Just ask, just ask the engineer to. Yeah, I was, so what I was gonna say is, let's, let's ask them to provide, you know, enough copies for the building inspector, the town engineer, and any of the board members I want.
So, we want a twenty-four by twenty-four.
Legible copy.
Jason, can you read this?
Um, yeah, it's a little bit too hard.
Yeah, it's pretty hard.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know where the water mains are on this map, but a lot of people don't realize where they are. And, but this is, like we said, hydrant, hydrant number seven, I don't know where hydrant number seven is.
Uh, legible, real simple.
Yeah, I, I, so I think obviously we need to get full-size copies, we're gonna get the full report from, you know, from their engineer tomorrow. We're gonna have to give that to the town engineer to review and for the building department to review, and then we're gonna have to, um, I don't know if a week is enough time to have the town engineer review this and Gary and get back to us, so really.
Uh, with the holiday next week.
So, I mean, real, yeah, well, that's, that's right, because they're off on Monday, so really the next time, I mean, certainly we understand, and I think Gary and I and Sean can work offline with, you know, Jason and the engineer and be ready to come back on February eleventh, you know, we should adjourn the meeting.
You might wanna do the second February meeting, because you really need to have Sean and their engineer get together and talk, and they can brief you in the meantime.
Sure.
But before they come before the, the town board, you really wanna have something, I think, a little bit more fleshed out.
We definitely want, you know.
One more week is gonna make that.
If you could reach out to the engineer and just make sure that, that, you know, that we would like a representative of their engineering firm to be present when you guys are back, so that the board and Gary and whoever, and maybe we even bring Sean here for this, and we could just sort of have like a back and forth on this.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, then we, we should have to, um, to check their schedule.
Um, I mean, so Gary, I mean, like, obviously, I mean, they're all, they're all operating.
Well, someone in hyper reports do not give us GPM. On one of the reports on oper, uh, item nine, top operating not functional and not rounded, that was checked out, no, that's a repair. So I'm gonna this week write him a letter, tell him to repair the hydrant. I don't have to wait on that, but there's something that should have been done already. The most important part of a hydrant is for the water department to be able to open the hydrant with the top not fouled. They should know that, all their professionals should be telling them this. If they can't fix the hydrant, then like the other one, by, by the maintenance shop, they need to replace it.
Gotcha, yep, so you're right, number nine, top operating not functional, not rounded.
And not the, probably five of the other reports did not give us a GPM. The engineer needs a GPM. So what they're giving us is not fully all the data that they need.
Well, that, I know, you thought about number five, the Kennedy hydrant, this makes him seventy-eight, the P two made in Zillow, so. Basically, no water, such little water has come out of this, uh, I don't know, it was, it's below hundred, I'm sure of that.
And the, um, these dates are November twentieth, is the testing done?
Yeah, so they gave this to us, we had, I believe we had this last time, and then it was given to the engineer and they requested two months to have the engineering firm come back with a report, and we're supposed to have it tomorrow, so you know, that was what the board had asked, so, um, obviously tomorrow, please have that report sent to all of us, we'll get Sean to start looking at it, and then, you know, obviously in the mean, you know, in the meantime, um, uh, Gary, do you have any recommendations, I mean, you know, certainly we've gotta, we gotta get the report.
Information and the timing, yeah? We're willing to work with up to repeat insufficient incomplete reports.
Look, yes, we did get the report on time from, from their engineer, um, we're gonna have it tomorrow, so, I mean, certainly we'll, uh, we'll get back together on this tomorrow once we have it and we'll, we'll start going through it, um, in the meantime, if there's any, do you have anything else, Tim, on this?
No.
I mean, we can't really do anything until we get the report, and then we have Sean look at it, and presumably we should probably also, what, send the report to the village.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Putting sprinkler system with hydro-soluble system on the water line is inadequate, to all those types inadequate, there's no way you can build a sprinkler system. Even when, sorry, I meant the report, even with a boost of, you just don't have enough GPM.
Yeah.
It'll run out of water in three minutes.
I also wanna know, I did read your, um, your understanding of the report, what is your expectations from town? I do see that, um, you repeat the word collab, collaboration in the town, so what is it that you're expecting from the town, obviously, aside from us making sure everything is intact?
Um, so from, um, my perspective, um, because we're still trying to develop and to, uh, remodeling this area. And we're gonna have, like, first, we're gonna restore the school and make it better, upgrade it, and then we're gonna have, um, we'll communicate with the town several times to, for a bigger, uh, development planning. So we're thinking, maybe, uh, we can, uh, pack them together, anyways, we need to, uh, do those, like, me, pipings and wiring for electricity, gas, and, uh, all those things. So what I'm thinking is, like, um, maybe we can consider, like, from the current situation and the, the future design or future development goal, and we can combine it together, because like, if we, what we, we want to do is in one shot, we want, we don't want to chop it out and separate it. Well, right now, we're focusing right now, and then for like, uh, six months later, we have to rip it out and we have to replace everything for a other, uh, even bigger system, so I think that's our goal.
Yeah, I mean, I was, that's, that's sort of what I understand, is that, you know, they intend on making, you know, they say they're gonna make investments into the current campus, um, I'm not sure fully what that timeframe is. So, but then beyond that, there's also intentions to, you know, work with the town, work with the community to try to come up with a project that's gonna, you know, work out, you know, for everybody. But that's, that, I would, I would say that's probably longer range than their intention to upgrade the buildings and the school. And so the question is, they're currently running a school of a certain size, and they need fire protection, but then they plan within, I don't know how long, I mean, what do you think the timeline is on the, on the investments and upgrades to the existing buildings, is that like s- six months, is that a year, is that a, is that a couple of years? I mean, obviously you can't know fully, but.
Well, I do know a little bit.
Yeah.
So because right now, they do hire the colliers to do the, uh, development planning, and we, they're gonna have like a three-stage, so the first steps, they're gonna restore and upgrade the current school campus. Um, so the, the major eleven buildings, they're doing the measurements right now, and they're planning for like, uh, six or eight months, so they want to uh, restore the, the building for the existing, uh, buildings.
Yeah, so obviously, well, this is gonna then, you know, and the, and this would be, I don't believe this would be planning board, is, if, if, right, if it's restoration of existing buildings?
I don't understand what he's saying, I don't know if it's going in it with architect plans to rebuild the building, or redesign a campus, a planning board, I, I'm not sure what he's saying.
I think you have to.
All very vague.
I think you have to assume that some of this will require planning board, um, review.
Yeah, I mean, we're, look, I mean, certainly we're gonna have to, you know, what I would recommend is, once, once you get to the point when you have an idea of what you're doing, I mean, if you're gonna be working on existing buildings and not changing major stuff to the site plan configuration, then that's one thing, but it probably makes sense at a certain point when, and I believe you're working, uh, you're working with colliers, and, and so I, I believe the person you have, he's come before our, our, you know, planning board before, he's familiar with the process, I think you've, you know, I think he knows Gary.
Yeah, I think Andrew.
Yeah, yeah, Andrew Featherstone, so, um, at some point, he's gonna know when he maybe needs to come to a planning board workshop to run it by, to see what they're gonna say, is it gonna just be a matter of like, you need architectural plans to Gary? Or is it gonna be plans and planning board approval, but I don't think you're at that stage yet?
Yes.
So, but, we have to deal with the fire protection issue, and so the question's gonna be, what do we require them now? But if you really are gonna be doing work in six to eight months, like, I think there is some consideration we have to make to, are we gonna make them make upgrades, then have to rip it out again if they're gonna make, you know, again, I don't know, this is like, uh, kinda complicates.
Gosh, I don't think we can know that until we see what colleagues.
No, I, I agree.
And what are we doing with Wright Hall, we have an existing building there that it should be either repaired or torn down. And I don't see anything, months and months ago, they said they were getting a design professional to give us a report on it, and I have nothing still.
We put off Wright Hall, we said that it was safe and secure, we would focus on the immediate needs, which was the fire protection. And so that was what this board decided to do, was focus on fire protection, which we did, because we, the board agreed that, you know, that that building was, was secure.
I really agree in security.
Yeah, and so certainly as part of, I would, I would imagine that your engineer is looking at what to do with Wright Hall as part of this evaluation, and if you can't bring it back and satisfy the building inspector and town engineer, then yeah, we're gonna have, you're gonna have to, to take it down.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, we're not, we're not there yet on that, so, okay, so it sounds like, um, So, okay, so it sounds like, um, we're gonna need to adjourn this to... Yes, sorry, but yes. Um, is there, is, uh, before I close, or adjourn this meeting to February twenty-fifth?
Is that the date?
Yeah, 'cause we're skipping the eighteenth and going to the twenty-fifth. Um, is there any public comment on this? No? Okay.
No, I wanted to sort of clear that. You understand that before we can come back, we should, we have proper size, the zone of, of...
Yeah.
This then here, this map that you made.
No problem.
And, and also have two report, we can have all report from our town engineer and have new report from new engineer to actually resolve or come up with answers to resolve the fire protection, 'cause that's, that's key. That's key. You have, you have zero fire protection there on campus. All the fire protection is, is off campus and stuff, and that's, and that was just not a good thing. And, you know, and I'm sure it's probably gonna affect your potential one to expand your buildings or redo your buildings. And I'm sure there's, there's, there's probably regulations that are gonna apply to that. So it needs to be addressed.
Okay, so the next, you, uh, I would, uh, double check with engineer if they can come over.
We're gonna, yeah, I, I wanna adjourn this to Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, but I know tomorrow, we're expecting to get the report the second that he gives it to you. We wanna forward it to us.
Yeah.
So we can give it to the building inspector, we can give it to our engineer, we can give it to the village, and then over the next, basically, month and a half, we, you know, really need, you know, the building inspector, and we'll have to make sure the town engineer is able to, to review this. And then my goal is to have the town engineer or somebody from, you know, the engineering firm here on the twenty-fifth, and for you to also have your engineer, so we can get into this. Um, this may require two, you know, having like a meeting with, you know, like, prior to this, in fact, it's likely to require a meeting with like me, you, your engineer, our engineer, whoever needs to be involved. So just, I guess, be on the lookout for that for sometime later this month or in, you know, early February.
Sure.
Is there, is there any other questions from board members or, no? Gary?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So if I could get a motion to adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, February twenty-fifth?
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay. Next up, we have a public hearing on the proposed local law to increase income limits of senior citizens for the, for the real property tax exempt, uh, exemptions. Does anybody wish to, to speak on the, the increasing the income limits of senior citizens for the real property tax exemptions? No, is there any comment from the board members on this? No? Okay. So then I would get a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed local law, increase income limits of senior citizen for real property tax exemptions.
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. All right. Next, I have the proposed local law, increase income limits of disabled persons for real property tax exemptions. Any, um, public comment on that? No? Okay? Board members? No? Okay? If I could get a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed local law to increase income limits of disabled persons for real property tax exemptions?
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy? Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay. So going back to the special meeting, um, first, we have the adopt local law, increase income limits of senior citizens for real property tax exemptions. Whereas the town board has before it for consideration a proposed local law entitled, "A Local Law to Amend Chapter 132, Article 1 of the Town Code of the Town of Cornwall, entitled Senior Citizens Exemption to Increase Income Limits of Senior Citizens for Real Property Tax Exemptions, in conformity with New York State Real Property Tax Law subsection 467. And whereas, following due notice, the town board held a public hearing on the proposed local law. Now therefore it be resolved as follows. That the town board does hereby adopts the above local law, which said local law shall be effective upon filing in the office of Secretary of State Malbey. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay. Next, I have the, the local law to increase income limits of disabled persons for real property tax exemptions. Whereas the town board has before it for consideration a proposed local law entitled, "A Local Law to Amend Chapter 132, Article 2 of the Town Code of the Town of Cornwall, entitled exemption for disabled persons to increase income limits of disabled persons for real property tax exemptions, in conformity with the New York State Real Property Tax Law subsection 459-C. And whereas, following due notice, the town board held a public hearing on the proposed local law. Now therefore it be resolved as follows. That the town board does hereby adopts the, adopt the above local law, which said local law shall be effective upon filing in the office of the Secretary of State Malbey. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay. So going back to public comment, is there any public comment before I adjourn the meeting? No? Okay. So if I can get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.
Are we going to executive session?
No. We're good.